This is a legally constituted meeting of the Town and Childlight Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted on the Gates Childlight News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the town hall. Please silence or turn off all phones and pagers, and please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with God its Father.
In the event of an emergency, please use the exits at the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed with the agenda in the order it was published. Tonight, we will be taking the informal application first, and then the public hearings after. When called, please proceed to the podium, state your name, and if you are representing an applicant, indicate the applicant's name and review the details of the application. Planning Board members, side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative. Upon completion of comments from the board and the side table, anybody wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand, state your name and address for the record. Address all comments and questions to the chairperson and keep comments pertinent to the application being heard. I will introduce the board members and side table participants. On my far left is Joe Defendis, Matt Emmons, Al Hallaby, Mike Nahan, Glenn Hyde, David Cross, and Paul Blozier. At our side table is our Assistant Town Council, Eric Stowe, our Building Department Manager, Paul Wanznerid, and our Town Engineer, Michael Hanscom. Our Recording Secretary is Andrew Hullett. On the agenda, under informal, the application of 3457 Union Street LLC, 3457 Union Street, Rochester, New York, 14624 owner, for final site plan approval for proposed Phase II Union Street Industrial Park to construct a second warehouse totaling 300,000 square feet. Property located at 3457 Union Street, Rochester, New York, 14624 in a GI zone or district.
Good evening, board members. I'm David Cox with Pastoral Associates, the civil engineer for the project, and I'll give you a quick update of what's happened since the last time I was here. So, number one, I did go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we did get all our required variances, so all those variances are all set. And then, the one item that I had homework on was utilizing the loop road versus left turn lane. So, we had discussions with the DOT and the town, and really looked at all the different pros and cons of each scenario. And where we came mutually agreed upon, Dave Lindsay, Mike Hanscom, and the DOT, and Pastoral, all came to the conclusion that the left turn lane is the safest and best option. And I'll just, I submitted the documentation from those individuals, as well as the documentation from the DOT, but just to kind of go over some of the quick things. The DOT's main concern with using the loop road is this access here for union processing, that there's tractor-trailers full of scrap metal coming out here, that if they're stopped here at the stop sign waiting to make a right or a left, that they block the entrance to the loop road. So, any CNM trucks or any trucks trying to use that loop road would not be able to turn in, so they would actually be stopping on Union Street and blocking traffic. Meanwhile, while they're stopped here, they're actually blocking the view of the scrap hauler trying to turn out, so they would not be able to see if there was any cars behind them. In the meantime, you know, a car maybe that's stacked up looks and says, "Oh, I can go around this truck." Pulls out to go around the truck. As the truck is starting to pull out, they don't see each other. It just creates some conflict points there. Also, putting, you know, a lot of this truck traffic down this road with all these businesses, and there's a single-family house there, that you're just introducing some public safety having a single-family house and some other businesses introducing the truck traffic there. And then, the loop here with the limited site distance, it doesn't meet proper site distance guidelines. Those are kind of the main highlights of, you know, after looking at all these, that, you know, doing the left turn lane was agreed upon by all parties, that it is the best option for all. And we did submit, in the meantime, since the last meeting, we did submit revised plans to Mike Hanscom and the town, addressing his comments, and he has issued a letter back to us. Number one is stating that he, that all parties agreed to the left turn lane as the best option. Number two, there was just a comment about making one of the four bays deeper for one of the sediment, or for one of the four bays. We will absolutely do that. He wants us to remove some hatching in an area, which we will take care of. And then, we will provide a landscape certificate of compliance when the project's complete. We have submitted the stormwater maintenance agreement to the town that's being reviewed currently, and we also submitted the letter of credit, which is being reviewed. So, those were just the final comments from Mike Hanscom, so I think that is pretty much where the project stands.
Okay. Joe, any questions or comments?
Nope, thanks, David. I'm good.
No questions.
Nothing further.
Nothing? Anything from the side table? You will recall, we did have a public hearing on this. We closed that public hearing. It was after that that we had discussion on this traffic study, and it was at that point that we decided to have this additional meeting with the State of New York, and that's why normally we leave the public hearing open, but we didn't, because that occurred after the public hearing was closed, and we make a decision to ask you to meet with the State DOT, as well as our Commissioner of Public Works, and return to this meeting with those results, which we've provided us, so thank you. So, with that, as far as any other board discussion? As far as seeker goes, I would just state that it, or I'd remind everybody that the preliminary site plan approval, we did a type-one action on the overall site plan, and we provided a negative declaration on that. I would just, for seeker, reaffirm, make a motion to reaffirm our negative declaration as far as seeker is on this property. None of the thresholds that were included in the original one for the build-out of Phase II have been exceeded, so therefore, we'll just reaffirm the negative declaration from the first meeting. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. As far as conditions, I have the conditions that were in the letter, as well as a few others that I'll place on here as, so with this application, the conditions of approval, applicant to provide written reply to each of the comments of the Town and Childlight Engineer. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the Building Department from the Landscape Architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the approved landscape plan. Property owner to enter into a stormwater control facility management agreement with the Town of Childlight and provide proper access easements to the town. The access easements and the stormwater control facility maintenance agreement will need to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the Planning Board Attorney, and then filed at the Monroe County Clerk's Office prior to the signing of the MyLARS. Approval is subject to final approval of the Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works. Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works should be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. All previous conditions imposed by this board that are still pertinent to the applicant shall remain in effect. Applicant shall install a left turn lane for northbound traffic on Union Street at an entrance to the property as required by New York State DOT. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations. This would be pending approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals for all required variances, which I understand you have.
Yep.
So, the applicant is to comply with all conditions of the Zoning Board of Appeals as applicable. The applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal, and any signage change shall comply with the town code, including obtaining signed permits. Any other conditions of approval? With those conditions of approval, the application of 3457 Union Street LLC, 3457 Union Street, Rochester, New York, 14624 owner, for final site plan approval for the proposed Phase II Union Street Industrial Park to construct a second warehouse totaling 300,000 square foot, a property located at 3457 Union Street, Rochester, New York, 14624 in a GI district. Second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
The application of Northern Soy Inc., CO Andrew Schechter, 345 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 owner, for preliminary site plan approval for a 17,000-square-foot addition to the south side of existing facility, 10,000-square-foot of manufacturing space, 7,000-square-foot of warehouse space, property located at 345 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 in an LA district.
Good evening. I'm Steve Schultz with MRB Group, here tonight with Tom Promberger from MRB and Max Hagney from LaFroyce. Unfortunately, the owners are unable to make the meeting tonight, but we are representing Northern Soy. Pretty straightforward project. We worked with them previously on their last two projects with the town. This will be a 17,000-square-foot addition, the south side of the building. As you said, there'll be 10,000 square feet of manufacturing, 7,000 warehouse. Architecturally, the building will be, the siding will match what's there now, height will match. It'll be a lower block level and upper metal banding. There's really minimal site improvements. We are showing landbank parking to meet code. It's the same thing essentially we did in 2013 for their previous addition. There's enough parking over on the west side of the building to support all employees and any new employees that'll come with this work. We do have a letter from the Town Engineer, review letter, which we've gone through. We can address the comments. I can go through them one by one, or...
Will you be able to satisfactorily address all of those with the Town Engineer? You see any issues with any of those?
Yeah, we can address them. The only real big issue is the variance that's
Right, okay.
...that's required, which I, it wasn't, I guess, addressed at the last approval, and I'm not sure if code changed or in the last six or seven years. It's a very similar application to 2013, where we didn't need a variance.
Right. I'm not sure either, but parking does front the industrial park road there.
Yeah, yeah.
As a result, it's considered front parking, so you will need to get a variance for that.
Okay. Yeah, and the other, the other, we're adding check dams to the swell, which we can do that.
Okay.
We did make the revisions to the environmental assessment form that were in the letter, and I brought additional copies.
I'll need at least one copy, yes. I don't have that. Not sure if the other board members would like a copy, but that's the question two in 17B.
While we're on that topic,
Sure.
I think 10 and 11 need to be yes as well, because those are existing, they're connecting to existing facilities. It says no with an explanation, but the explanation is it's connecting to those facility, the sanitary sewer lateral and the water service that's already existing.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we can change that.
They just change, change that to yes.
Yep.
I do have one more question on the EAF, and that's 12B, the SHPO component. If there's a letter from SHPO clearing it or anything else?
No, we don't have a letter. The site, we feel, was previously disturbed twice during the construction of the industrial park and the building. We really didn't see it being necessary. I don't know if it was, we'd have to look into whether it was addressed in 2013, but I couldn't find any records of any required archaeological surveys of the site. We're within the limits of the, what was originally approved as a future 48,000-square-foot addition back in 2000. Not disturbing anything more than what was originally planned for the site.
So, when you initially came in, you had a build-out of 48,000 square feet?
Please, yeah, I have it under here.
And you did a complete seeker of the archaeological survey at that point? And now, you're just building out the addition to get to that number of square feet, is that right?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, here is the plan here, it's built out here with 48,000 square feet, so it's within that, within that footprint that was approved in 2000.
Okay. Let me just make that change on the copy you have initially, and I'll take that tonight just so I have that for the EAF. You have anything else to present before we ask questions?
Uh, no.
Is that, I take it that's the elevation you have on the board there?
Yep, that's the elevation.
It'll match the existing current building?
Yep.
Same at the bottom, top, everything will be the same?
Yep.
Joe, any questions?
No, that's fine. I don't have any questions.
Are the roof lines the same height? Because on the drawing you gave us, it's a little bit misleading. It looks like it's higher. They will be the same roof line.
Sir, your name and, could you?
I'm Max LaFroyce.
Max, your name and address for the record?
Address?
Your name, address for it.
I'm Max LaFroyce, Building, 1020 The Exchequer.
Thank you. All right. And I'm sorry, you have two options on the plan. What option have they decided?
They're going for the whole thing, but when you look at the elevation
Right.
...I'm a little confused.
Right, okay.
That's why we brought that.
The elevation will be the same, then? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Al?
Nope.
No questions?
Nope.
Paul? Mike? Eric? At this point, I'll open it up to the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. An additional board discussion? No. Okay, looks seems pretty straightforward. All right. So, as far as seeker, I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Okay, for, you're also seeking waiver of final, correct?
Yes, if that's possible.
Paul, is that all set? Waive final with the town? So, for the conditions of approval, applicant shall provide written response to comments provided by the Town Engineer. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the Building Department from the Landscape Architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the proposed land, or the approved landscape plan. Approval is subject to final approval of the Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works. The Town Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works shall be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. The applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Building permits should not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is, application is subject to all required permits, inspections, code compliance regulations, it's pending approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals of all required variances. Applicant shall comply with all conditions of the Zoning Board of Appeals as applicable. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal, and any signage change shall comply with town code, including obtaining permits. Any other conditions? With those conditions, then, the application of Northern Soy Inc., CO Andrew Schechter, 345 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 owner, for preliminary site plan approval for a 17,000-square-foot addition to the south side of existing facility, 10,000-square-feet of manufacturing space, 7,000-square-feet of warehouse space, property located at 345 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, 14624 in an LA district.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't include final, so with those conditions of approval, thanks for the reminder. The application of Northern Soy Inc., CO Andrew Schechter, for preliminary site plan approval with the waiver of final. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Application of Susan Daley, 131 Morgan Road, Scottsville, New York, 14546 owner, for a special use permit to put a 24, excuse me, 28 by 24 addition, which is an in-law suite to the existing home of property located at 131 Morgan Road, Scottsville, New York, 14546 in an AC district.
Hello, I'm Susan Daley, and I'm here to see if I can get that special use permit.
Okay. Can you give it a description of the proposal, what it'll look like?
Well, it's a 28 by 24 off the, would be the north side of the house, behind the garage. 172 square foot. It will match the existing home that's there right now, the siding. The basement that will be underneath it, will have a full basement underneath.
And, will this have a common entrance to your main home, as well as secondary entrance from the exterior?
There will be an entrance through a four-season room that's going to be put in the back.
Okay.
And then, into the garage, and they will have an exterior egress also.
Okay. But there'll be, and looking at the engineering comments, will there be wheelchair-accessible sidewalk to that in-law apartment?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Joe, any questions?
No. No questions.
Well, your drawing is so small, I can't hardly, yeah, I'd agree to think at it, but to his point with the wheelchair-accessible sidewalk, you want to make sure that the door openings and the hallways and everything inside do.
They're all 36-inch. We're also putting a 60 by 60 roll-in shower. The bathroom is 7 by 7.
Look, you got it covered.
We're trying.
This is from a parent, right?
My parents, yes.
Okay. Glenn?
No questions. You got a big enough driveway for a couple more cars?
Got a double-wide with three-car turnaround.
Okay.
I think we're okay.
Looks good.
Paul? Mike? Eric?
Just the questions on the EAF.
Questions on the EAF.
Mr. Hanscom noted them in his letter.
A couple of questions, I didn't know how to answer correctly.
Sure. You have the seeker in front of you?
We have the one from the engineer and my
Okay, right, so question two, you'll be needing a
Yeah, that's
Question nine, you understand his response to that?
I do, once, you know, once I read through what he had put on there, now it makes sense to me, what they're asking for.
All right. And you'll be complying with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, she, the applicant, Ms. Daley, you're okay with us amending the EAF to make those changes that Mr. Hanscom brought up?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the application.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any additional discussion on the application?
No.
As far as seeker goes, make a motion to declare the board lead agency, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. For conditions, building permits should not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations. Special use permit is granted for use by in-law only and shall cease to exist when the in-law ceases to use it. The in-law apartment should not be used as a rental unit. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. Applicant's attorney to file decision letter in the book of deeds at the Monroe County Clerk's Office and provide proof of filing to the Planning Board Attorney and the Town and Childlight Building Department prior to the issuance of a COO. When filing decision letters, shall be indexed against the property owner's name. Any other conditions? With those conditions, application of Susan Daley, 131 Morgan Road, Scottsville, New York, 14546 owner, for a special use permit to put a 28 by 24 addition in-law suite to the existing home of property located at 131 Morgan Road, Scottsville, New York, 14546 in an AC district.
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
Application of the Amish Outlet and Gift Shop, 3530 Union Street, North Childlight, New York, 14514. Edward Van De Water, 38 Bunny Run, Churchill, New York, 14428 owner, revised site plan approval to increase existing sales and display area of products of property located 3532 and 3536 Union Street, North Childlight, New York, in a GI district.
Thank you. Good evening. Rob Fitzgerald, Fitzgerald Engineering, representing Amish Outlet and Ed Van De Water tonight. If I can approach the board, existing buildings here, this back parking lot is filled with gravel, kind of a rusty engine. Just to make it look like one connected front. The stack is left to expand, sort of sheds that they do sell. Then, the front, we have a big stall, we're looking at a handful of gazebos and playsets in the front area. Frank, if you'd like to comment, I'd like to discuss for the floor, because there's no Then the front, we are looking to explore, we're looking at a handful of gazebos and playsets in the front area. I'd like to discuss further, because there's no stepback. We are looking at getting all the sheds behind the 75-foot, also looking to maybe put out there to have different level on the front 75-foot stepback. We would like to get a handful of gazebos, like two gazebos and 68 playsets out front just for display area. That is one change that is kind of trying to work with the town engineer's comments, whether permanent structure, sheds I did have, playsets we would like to have, so we would like to approach some of that. Actually, C is quite a bit, 175, right? There is in this area, quite a lot. Any sheds? From the town engineer's standpoint, there's not a lot to the site, it's just roving the demo of the buildings, cleaning it up. I think the structure is kind of what we're looking to do for this lot. Just touching, based on the town engineer's comments, there's the question whether we'd be parking within the front stepback and gravel area. Like I said, we're looking to remove that gravel, the newly proposed gravel, so that would be impossible to do. Um, let's see...
Will that be a parking area?
No.
It won't be for parking?
It won't even, we're proposing to make a grass tonight.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That looks softer too, you know, for the playsets displays as well. We're also okay with changing the seeker form at the town engineer's request.
Okay, I'll make that change here.
So I think that takes care of most of the town engineer's comments, just with maybe some more discussion and we can get, um, as well as playstations just for display.
Are you talking about within the 75-foot buffer?
Correct, yes. And again, we would like to make that grass, so...
The code states that the setback is required, so we wouldn't be able to tell you, you don't have to follow the code?
Yeah, I just, I looked at the code, and I didn't see where it said semi-permanent structures. So I guess that's what I was looking for clarification on.
Yeah, I think the code states for the project. I don't think it identifies whether it's a permanent structure, I'm not sure, but I don't believe that it does. It did, it says, 75-foot setback is based on the project, so the project would require a 75-foot setback to have for anything that's on the property. It would be my interpretation, but the town council or the town building department has a different one. That could be discussed, I suppose afterwards, because we would approve this based on what the code says.
We don't allow movable sheds in the front setback either, even though they're temporary.
We're not proposing movable sheds in the front setback, just the playsets only that are movable.
So I think the interpretation of the code has been that they can't be there, and the only, and I'm not sure if the Zoning Board of Appeals could review that, but we'll wait to get a better comment from the side table on that.
And we're actually hoping to kind of break up the look of the sheds, we're from the road to see a couple nice looking gazebos.
Oh, um... I thought I saw, there's an entrance to that property that you're going to be taking over, off of Union Street?
Right.
Right. What's the distance from there to Boom Drive? Because that's the entrance you use, right? That's the main entrance is Boom Drive? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Right. Right. Do you plan on gating it? What do you plan on doing with it? Because that's one of the other items in the code, as we try to do is, on that, the living road, try to eliminate as many entrance and exits as possible, and try not to have any within 1,000 feet, of course, and sometimes, but if you're not going to be using it after the construction is done, is there a reason to keep it?
Do you want to answer that question, Ed Van de Water?
Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Ed Van de Water, Ed Van de Water.
Thank you.
Yes, it is, we're both at the same time trying to utilize property for one purpose, is, you know, is... However, they are two separate properties, if they ever had to be split up, we would still...
So you're going to, so you plan on leaving them as two separate properties?
At this point, yeah. I don't foresee breaking them up going forward to your point of view, they're...
Right. If I mistake or otherwise, right? Because right at the end of that driveway, assuming when you're taking out all that gravel, you're going to take out everything with that driveway, so you're just going to be left with a little stub, is that right?
Actually, what I was thinking, and I think Rod made a mistake, is we have shed deliveries, we were going to run that road right to where the sheds go. Okay, so the trucks, which are semi-trucks, we can drop them off and go right around. So...
You want to use that right now with, what is it, driveway for tractor trailer traffic?
I mean, we can use what we've, the same way we've been using, what we, what they have been doing, is coming in, down Boom Drive into this entrance, backing up, not shut off here, right? This would make the flow a lot better if you there, just go right around here. But it would make the flow better, so I did not want to totally... Give people our advantage, put a gate on, allow trucks, only, only the trucks to come in from you. There is already a secondary acceleration lane for the FedEx trucks, they call it, down there, so...
Well, that's right, there's a, so, all right, so, would you rebuild that? And I guess, Rob's question for you, is the turning radiuses, the support for that road for tractor trailers, would you have to rebuild that, I would assume?
I'm not sure what size trucks they're...
It's really wide, the driveway is really wide. They're just a layman, but I don't know.
But, right, that's why I asked, that's why I asked the question.
Your engineer...
40 feet wide of the road.
It's pretty substantial. I don't know 100% off time I hadn't.
Okay.
It looks actually similar to Boom Drive in geometry.
Okay. And what you propose is to put a gate up there?
Yeah.
Some foot distance in, I'm not sure what the cost they would require, but, and then you'd have it open when you know you're having deliveries, and then close it? Okay. Any response from the side table? And the code is the code, and if they want to variance it, it to go to the planning board, or is it...
Well, you guys can't modify the setback.
Oh, right.
Right, so anything would be with the Building Department, code enforcement, and if necessary, the ZVA.
Okay.
So, I, we had talked about what may be existing as far as permits or variances on the property, we can certainly look into that, but the relief, you can't grant the relief anyway, so...
Exactly. So we'll be looking at this plan, as you will be maintaining that 75-foot back with everything, and then you'll need to work with the Building Department to determine what, if anything, can, can be in there, or if anything needs to be removed, or if you need to go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Any other presentation items before we get to questions? I know we already kind of started on that.
I think we're good.
Go.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. On this drawing, we do have the designated areas, I think gazebos fallen off, existing with, yeah, four of them, no one's allowed to be there, are those actually there? I think they are.
Those existing?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the existing ones?
Yeah, right here on the existing pillars, he's color.
Just to reiterate the comment, that's what the Building Department will do, is research any previous...
I got you. That was the comment.
Right.
Okay. And then the next question is, yes, so I heard a couple things, it's drawn as gravel, you're saying grass, and now I had to say that it's actually going to be grass with the gravel drive still going through? So, just want to make sure I'm on the... Yep, yep. But then it'll be grass. Okay, so basically, the area on your drawing, where it's called out with the dotted line and it says new gravel area for gazebos and playset display, that's actually would be grass, we're saying?
Yes, yeah. We're looking to pull that back and clean it up. The thought being, you know, we're going to display playset to be nicer, have them sitting on grass, like in, it looks like someone's backyard in a gravel parking lot.
What, so to the tractor trailer traffic and the shed delivery, how often are you getting shed deliveries?
It's seasonal. Ed, want to answer that again?
Usually once or twice a week. Usually once a week, some weeks twice.
Yeah. And I, okay, and I appreciate the idea of, it's not a lot, it's not like every day or two times a day, but I guess the concern is, you know, the first applicant that was in here, we just talked about tractor trailers backing up, we're only talking about one, but we already know there's tractor trailers traversing that section of the road. And I guess my concern is, is that if the gate, if you do put in a gate, and now we're going to say the tractor trailers are going to go through that way, what, you know, I guess my concern is, is now the gate's closed, you didn't know they were going to be there, or they're early, or whatever, and then now they're out on the road. I guess then your backup plan would be, is that they would come down Boom Drive and come in the old way, or?
Yeah, actually, they can leave either, either way, but might be better off if they came down Boom Drive and left through the...
Got you.
It made that there wouldn't be any issues with me, I'm coming by some...
It does, yeah, I mean, I'm sure that G could probably... If here it does, I think it'd be great to see that turn.
It'd make more sense to come in from Boom Lane, there's a right-hand turn lane onto Boom Drive, as opposed to coming in, as opposed to ingressing into the property in question. It'd be better to ingress Boom Drive, egress, if you had egress that...
Yeah, but that does make sense too, because...
Yeah, I guess I would just be concerned with it coming in off of there. Not that it wouldn't work, it's just that if the gate's locked, you know, you're going to...
I really think you just don't want...
I don't think you should either.
To that property.
I don't think you should either.
So, I mean, it's been working for 15 or 20 years, the way it is now, so...
Well, with a, you're saying the way you're taking deliveries now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, I'm good for now, thanks.
Just out of curiosity, I know this whole project's had several times he's come in and made selective changes. For some reason, in the back of my mind, did we not give him a number of sheds he could store back there at one time? I don't recall.
I don't recall, and I think that's what Paul is going to research in Hill's...
It was based on the area, not a number of sheds.
All right. But it was, it was discussed, I do remember that. All right, so I don't know.
All right, nothing?
My only, did you have any landscaping proposed?
I mean, I'm not talking about a lot, but just maybe a little bit between, like, really right on the setback line, you know, a little bit of screening for the sheds on back, not, you know, maybe a half dozen.
I think Ed's idea was to kind of use the gazebos for that, you know, as display without hiding too much of the sheds.
So, so...
That didn't... I actually, I like to put neighbors from the mice over all the way down to the block. That also included that we can, I'm able to see this one, but then I'm throwing now the, maybe, so I'm not sure.
Maybe a little, just a little screening, you know, there's going to be quite a few sheds back there. And not to eliminate the view of all of them, but just...
Right, yeah.
And you need just 1% of whatever the project is, like to go to landscaping, or you donate it to the town. So, I think you'd rather probably put landscaping on your property than donate 1% of the cost to the town, is that correct? There's a requirement in the code, the project would require 1% of the cost of the project for landscaping. If you don't do that, then you'd have to donate 1% of the cost of the project to the town's tree planting fund. On your property, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
No, no, I get that, we're talking about landscaping, like David mentioned, you'd like to see some landscaping in there? You are required to put landscaping in?
Yeah.
So, you just have to submit a landscaping plan to the town for what you would do, and then when you're done, make sure you just get a form to that.
Break up the sheds.
Okay.
Thank you. Paul? Mike? Eric? At this point, I'll open the public hearing. Any comments from the audience? Little audience is left.
Okay, Boom, on Boom Drive? Um, my neighbor, Lanzado, is, my view is, you know, that's been a good neighbor for a long time, what he does, I think he wants, that he told me Lanzado made sense. Um, you know, it's, I think he owns a pretty nice operation, so, you know, it doesn't affect us any way, or it doesn't affect my building any way, and not necessarily us, but it's, you'll need approval, so, just what I'm, what I'm...
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this application?
Second?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Any further board discussion? And Ed, entrance, you want to make it that it needs to be an exit then? For trucks to exit? Is that our recommendation? The 30, was it 35, 32, 35, 36 Union Street?
It's more important just to have a gate there.
I'm sorry?
It's more important just to have a gate there.
And if it's an exit, then you know they're there, you can go open the gate for them and let them leave. Okay. And then the other thing is just to be sure that that exit has the proper turning radiuses and, um... and structural strength for a tractor trailer. Paul, is that something? Is that something that we would want to see in there? That review from the commissioner of public works for the entrance there, that it would be able to support tractor trailers and? Okay. Okay. That existing driveway goes to 3532 and 3536 Union Street, right? Okay. Okay, as far as seeker, I make a motion to declare the board lead agency, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application to be an unlisted action with no significant environmental impact. Do we have a second?
Agreed.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. For conditions, approval of approval, actually, let me change one here. Just got to hit the landscaping one, I don't want to put that in there. Okay, for the conditions of approval, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department, from landscape architect certifying that the approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance, the approved landscape plan. Applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. All previous conditions imposed by this board that are still pertinent to the applicant remain in effect. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, and code compliance regulations. Pending approval of the zoning, is there anything needed for the zoning board of appeals? I don't think there is, is there? I don't think there are any variances.
They need storage, the setback.
Oh, right, okay, so, pending approval of the zoning board of appeals of all required variances, applicant to comply with all conditions of the zoning board of appeals is applicable. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal, and any signage change will comply with the town code, including obtaining sign permits. Applicant shall provide a drawing of the existing road to 3532, 3536 Union Street, to the building department for review by the town of Child, Commissioner of Public Works. Any other conditions?
Just that the commissioner of public works, it's review and approval for that entrance? Highway superintendent, commissioner of public works, town engineer.
Okay, provide a drawing of the existing road to 3532, 3536 Union Street for review and approval by the town of Child, Commissioner or Superintendent of Highways and the town engineer.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but it's the existing road and any proposed modifications.
Okay, provide a drawing of the existing driveway and any proposed modifications to 3532, 3536 Union Street for review and approval by the town of Child, Superintendent of Highways and our town engineer. Sound good? Any other conditions? With those conditions, the application of Amish Outlet and Gift Shop, 3530 Union Street, North Child, New York, 14514. Edward Vanderwater, 38 Bunny Run, Churchill, New York, 14428, owner, revised site plan approval to increase existing sales and display area of products of property located at 32, 3532 and 3536 Union Street, North Child, New York, in a GI District.
Yes.
Yes.
I also vote yes, it's approved. You're welcome, have a nice night. I didn't, I didn't receive any minutes, did anyone else? Okay, any other? I did not receive them, no. Yes. We all did, none of us got it. All right, meeting is adjourned.